Good evening. Welcome to City Council meeting tonight. We're glad to see everyone here. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and we'll ask Reverend Chris Hawks to give our invocation tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we pray together? God, we just wanna thank you so much for the blessings that you've given us today. And Father, we thank you for this time that we have come together to, Lord, discuss the business of our city. Lord, I just wanna pray tonight, first of all, for our leaders. Your word commands us that we are to pray daily for our leaders. And certainly that means that our community leaders who direct our community and the events, we wanna pray for them and lift them up to you. We pray for clarity tonight. We pray for wisdom. Lord, we pray that your Holy Spirit will guide all the decisions here. We pray for the citizens tonight, Lord. All of us who live in Hamlet and love our community. Lord, we pray for the best in our community. And Lord, though we are, we trust our leadership. We trust those that we have elected to put into these positions. Ultimately, our trust is in you, that you will lead this, these leaders and help us as citizens, Lord, to be good stewards of what you have given us. And Father, I pray for direction, not just for our leaders. I pray for direction and wisdom for this, from the citizens as well. Lord, I pray that you would bless the city of Hamlet. Lord, we love living in this community and we thank you for the blessing that we have. And we ask this prayer, the name of your son and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Hawks. Counsel, you have before you tonight the agenda for tonight's meeting. What are your wishes on that?
So moved to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussions, additions, deletions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Thank you. Also, before you counsel, you have had an opportunity to look at the closed session minutes from the July tenth meeting. Also, you have the regular minutes of before you. What are your wishes on those?
Motion to adopt.
Got a motion? And second? Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. At this time, we come along to item number five, which is comments for, from attendees. We have a lot of people here tonight. We probably have a large number who wish to make comments. You need to know that we'll be limiting any comments to a maximum of five minutes. And the first comments I'd like to hear from tonight is an update from Mr. Chuck Cobb, reference the Seaboard Festival. Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Chuck Cobb and I'm accompanied by Chris Carpenter, who will make some remarks in a few minutes. We appear before you this evening on behalf of the Seaboard Festival Board of Directors. We also have board members Diane Mabe and Robin Hewitt present in the audience. We want to give you a brief update on the Seaboard Festival. Our board is comprised of newcomers to the festival and experienced members who guide us toward it, who will be guiding us toward a successful thirty-sixth annual Seaboard Festival Day. Chris Carpenter has done a great job serving as treasurer of the board and offering his expertise in many areas. Jackie Hatfield is in charge of our car show, as he's done for many years. And we all look forward to seeing what he assembles on Seaboard Festival Day. Duke and Missy Smith are once again spearheading the five K race. And they're doing a first-rate job of expanding this event each year. It gets better and better. Diane Mabe has done a superb job handling all of our vendor applications, which in my opinion is one of the most difficult jobs of the, the board, or of the festival. Robin Hewitt has assisted her with some of the food vendors and also assisted me with entertainment. Nancy Everett, although not a board member, has served as a mentor and provided us with valuable advice along the way. Peggy Harrington has been an asset to the board, who also lends her experience for many years' involvement with the festival. Tony Cloussis is the Seaboard Festival Vice President. And he too has, has been involved with the festival and brings to the table a lot of information and, and guidance. Many people are working hard to make this a successful event. And I don't wanna leave anyone out, because we have a terrific board. And everyone has stepped up to the plate to help out with the festival. And I believe we all benefit from the fruits of their effort. You can expect to see the local crafters brought back, live entertainment, traditional and new commercial and food vendors, the five K foot race, car show, as alluded to, and kids' games and fun activities. The North Carolina Forest Service will be on hand with their display, including a helicopter, a tanker, Smokey the Bear, and possibly a firefighting kids' game. We extend a special thank you to the city for your assistance in get, in giving to us year after year after year. We realize that without your involvement and support, we would not be as successful. Thanks many times over. Also, we look forward to working with the Richmond County Tourism Development Authority. I met last week with Executive Director Kelly Chance. And they have many resources that would be a tremendous help to us. They can promote the festival and assist with advertising and publicity, not only for Richmond County, but surrounding counties in North and South Carolina. At this time, I'd like to bring Chris Carpenter forward, who would like to add some remarks.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanna speak tonight on behalf of, one, being a citizen, and two, I guess with my knowledge of working with volunteers and nonprofit, talk about what we need moving forward. You know, I've been living in this town most all my life. I can't remember ever not attending a Seaboard Festival. So, you know, I feel like it's a privilege and I'm honored to serve on the committee. If you'd asked me this time last year, would I be serving on the Seaboard Committee ever? That would've been no, 'cause, you know, I'm busy, just like everyone else. But, you know, somebody, or a couple of you, asked me if I would. And, you know, I chose to, chose to start out, just getting on the committee and seeing where I could help. Then I kinda got taught into being treasurer. So, and I'll agree with Chuck, everything's going really well so far, considering our learning curve. You know, we've had a big learning curve, but I feel like from start to finish, we've accomplished a lot. I also like the group that we have. We come in every meeting. And I think the only challenge we have to ourselves is, you know, not can we do as good as year one, or as year ten, or as year, you know, fifteen? It's what can we do this year to put together what has the potential to be the best festival it can be? You know, and hope the best for the weather. Moving forward, we've kind of identified some needs that we have. And the biggest need that we can see moving forward, that we're hoping maybe some of you can help with tonight, or, you know, even some of the covers that will come from this being on TV will help with, is we need volunteers to day of. You know, I work for a nonprofit. I understand how important volunteers are. This is a total volunteer-based committee. A lot of people do think it belongs to the city. It, this is not a city event. It's a big reflection on the city, just like everything else that happens within the city. And you guys understand that, and that's why you've been so supportive to the festival committee this year and all the years in the past. So, what we'd like to ask is if each one of you could think back over the years to people that you know, that you are personally friends with, or acquaintances with, that have helped the day of in the past. And, and you ask them yourself, you know, it'd be great if we could get a list. But, you know, it's tough for us to try to start contacting people we may not even know. So maybe you guys could put together four or five people that you know, and ask them if they'd be willing to help. Put them in contact with me or with Chuck. Because, again, if you've helped with the festival, and I know some of you have, the day of is, is the hardest part probably of the whole festival, especially when it comes to the number of volunteers you need. And that's what we're trying to piece together. So we're hoping by the time you meet again next month, and maybe Chuck comes back to give another update, that maybe you will be provided some people to us that you've asked if they would be willing to help. So, and that's all I ask tonight. So, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. We appreciate your time. Appreciate what y'all are doing. It sounds like it's going along real well. How many vendors do you have so far, Chuck? Do you remember off the top of your head? Just rough estimates, fine.
A hundred and twenty-four vendors that we've been doing.
Goodness.
Hundred and fifty-seven base was sold, and approximately about thirty-five.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Appreciate that. Alright, we're moving along. First person I'd like to get up and speak, please come up to the podium and state your name. Reverend Ellerby. State your name for the official record, please, ma'am.
So, the, oh man, City Council, I stand, uh, when I got my water bill, I like to fell out. From forty-seven dollars to eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents, I could not believe it. And I was wondering why it's so, uh, high? Cause am I telling you why?
The city manager can explain that to you.
Okay.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for being here tonight. Always glad to have you, and you're always more than welcome. Do you happen to know how many gallons you use, Miss Ellerby, approximately? Do you have your bill? Because the water bills current, well, as they previously stood, each water bill was twenty-one dollars minimum, which included twenty-five hundred gallons of water. After that, you were billed per usage. Sewer was similar. It was sixteen dollars base charge, and that included twenty-five dollars, uh, twenty-five hundred gallons of water minimum, and then billed after. Under the new rate, we have dropped the twenty-one dollars to eighteen dollars, and are charging per tier for water, and the same with sewer, except from sixteen down to thirteen.
Uh, that's in the city.
That's inside the city limits. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Are you inside or outside the city limit? You're inside. And it looks, do you mind me saying how much you used? It looks like you used around seventy-one hundred gallons of water. So, under the old system, that would not have been a forty-seven dollar bill. We would've taken twenty-five hundred off of that seventy-one hundred. So, do you typically run, do you know your average amount that you use, or are you usually around that seven thousand mark? You don't know? No, ma'am. I, I know a lot of times you just get the bill and don't really pay attention. Do you, do you live alone, or do you have a family? Okay, because that seems a little high for two people, that seventy-one hundred gallons. What I can do is, I can pull up your account, and I can look at previous months. And then we can have somebody come out there and do a recheck to see if you do have a leak. Because if there's just two of you in a house, seventy-one hundred would seem a bit high for that to be running. But, like I said, we're charging per usage now. You don't pay for anything that you don't use, but you use for each gallon that you do use in a tier system. And we're doing that for several reasons. Number one, last year it cost two point seven million dollars for us to operate our enterprise fund. Now, our enterprise fund is what it costs to run our water plant and our sewer plant. In water and sewer sales, we only brought in around two point three million dollars. So going off sales and the costs that it, that it took to operate the two plants, it was about a four hundred thousand dollar difference. Our rates haven't been adjusted since two thousand and eight. There's some big projects that are coming up. Our sewer plant's coming on forty years old, our water plant nearly a hundred. And we went through a lot of studies. We talked with North Carolina Rule Water, our Council of Government, to see what needed to be put in place in order to do some renovations in the very near future. And our rates are very comparable with Wade'sboro, Robbins, small towns, similar to Hamlet, as well as Richland, Richmond and Scotland County. So, I know that this was probably a, a big bit of a shock, and I do apologize for that. We sent, uh, three months, May, June, and July, we sent out notices with the water bills, giving a heads up that this was, was going to happen. But I'll be glad to check on this for you, and we can send somebody out there to double check to see if you actually did use seventy-one hundred, Miss Ellerby. Yes, ma'am. And again, thank you so much for being here. Mind if I hold on to this, Miss Ellerby? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Ellerby. Next person? State your names, please.
Um, I'm Taryn JP Hancock, and we, JP's lived in Hamlet all his life. I've lived for fifteen years. My concern is, and I understand Jesse has told me, I've spoken with Jonathan, I understand where you're coming from. Things change. I get that. Rates are gonna go up. I totally understand that. My concern is, this paper goes out for, you said, three times. Um, the average citizen, including myself, and I'm well-educated, wouldn't understand it. So, even me being a teacher, if I just give these people random, you know, work, and I don't explain it, they're not gonna get it. With that being said, it's my fault, just like I've told them, for not being involved. My concern is, with it being even three months, then all of a sudden, this bill triples for some people, or quadruples. And it's over, you know, it's like all of a sudden, was there not like a five-year plan? I understand that y'all had to give for the grant, or whatever. But, and the water system has to be fixed, but, I mean, you've had no before just three months. That's my concern. And then all of a sudden, it hits, and then these people, you know, I know some people had a four hundred, six hundred dollar bill. And I get some of that was irrigation, but my bill was a hundred and three. It's what we used. I mean, I'm not doubting that. But that's a big increase from typically being seventy dollars. Now, granted, I had the money to pay it. I didn't wanna take out a hundred dollars. But some people don't. I mean, that's my concern, is being, you know, a citizen and you read everything on a social forum. But that's just a lot to take in for one hit.
It seemed to be like a nearly thirty percent increase for an average family.
Yes, sir. Sure. So you went from approximately around seventy to a hundred and three?
Yes.
Right, sure. And like I said, that would be based on your usage. That would probably be about an average increase. The average increase was anywhere between ten to thirty dollars, based on the usage, based on the amount of water used for single, single-family households, where there was just one person, whether they're elderly or live alone. The water bills did consistently stay about the same, or even a little lower. Those who used less than a thousand gallons would have seen a, would have seen a small decrease. I know there's very few people that use less than a thousand gallons.
Everybody I've talked to, their bill increased.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And I, I have talked to several people that they stayed at that forty-seven dollar minimum, or they went down maybe a dollar, depending on, on usage. But the, I understand what you're saying, and I am, I am sorry that if I didn't make it clear enough in the letter how to, how to calculate it.
But is there a way for this to be, I mean, because for this just all of a sudden to increase that much, was there not a way to make the increase over a period of time? Why this much at one time?
Yes, ma'am. And we discussed this in our spring budget workshop. We talked about it then. We talked about alternatives. We looked at how other municipalities around the state bill for their water and sewer. I consulted, like I said, with North Carolina Rule Water and our Council of Government to see how other people do it and best practices. So it wasn't something that we haphazardly rushed into. We gave it a lot of thought. We discussed it at numerous meetings. And unfortunately, there just was not a good way to do it. I mean, there was...
If you could do whatever, period, like if you increase, I don't know, ten, fifteen dollars, or ten dollars here and there, instead of it just being a hit at one time?
Right, right. And that was not an option that we discussed. We discussed multiple options on how to bill for this. But like I said, there was no, there's not been an increase in over, in ten years. And I've certainly no offense whatsoever, but a thirty-three dollar, a thirty...
Yeah, but I get there hasn't been an increase in ten years, and that's awesome. That's great.
Right.
My concern is, even when there is an increase, the amount is a huge jump.
Right, right. I completely understand. And we were talking earlier, we're going to have to apply for a five hundred thousand dollar grant to redo our dam in the very near future at the city lake. Our sewer plant's coming off the note, and there's going to have to be major renovations out there, and I, I've...
How do you know that that needs to take place?
We started preliminary studies probably last, uh, since I've been here. We started in the spring of last year. We did an asset management plan, where we looked at our infrastructure system, at the water and sewer plant, and evaluated our options. We've had some engineers come in to see what we're gonna have to do. We have on the agenda tonight, a formal, formal proposal from an engineering company to come in and start initial planning and initial, um, up, plans to upgrade at the sewer plant. So I know that we've been planning on it for at least the past year, that we've been looking into it.
Cause I know you've been talking to some from the county, like they did like a four-year, like it was increased over four years.
Yes, ma'am.
So instead of it being a huge hit at one time.
Right, right. And I'm, I'm not exactly familiar with how the county bills. I know the county did go up, go up this year, this year as well. And if you use the amount of gallons that you used here in Hamlet, if used in the county, it would've been larger for water. But I understand that county doesn't have sewer and not garbage pickup as well.
What number do we have to get to, to apply for our grant that we're trying to get?
There's certain tiers that they look at. We had to go in and completely change the way that we bill. Like I said, we gave a twenty-five hundred gallon allowance previously. We changed that to where you change each five thousand gallons that you use. Zero to five thousand is two fifty. Five thousand and one to ten thousand is, uh, three dollars. This is for water. And then, um, ten thousand to fifteen thousand is three fifty, and then above fifteen thousand is four dollars. That's very similar and very competitive to, like I said, Wade'sboro and Robbins. And when the city of Hamlet decides that it's time to go apply for the grant, we're gonna submit our paper, paperwork. But let's just say that Wade'sboro also goes up in competition with us. The state is going to see, well, Wade'sboro is doing all they can to keep their rates competitive. They're charging where they need to be. Whereas Hamlet's charging one, a dollar forty, a dollar fifty per thousand gallons of water. And naturally, Wade'sboro, whatever municipality that we're competing against, would have precedence. And like I said, we're going, in the next two to three years, we're going to have to be applying for some grant money, or even a USDA low-interest loan. The way that our rates were previously, we couldn't even be competitive for a low-interest loan from the USDA. So it, it is very difficult situation, and I...
They've been doing their plan over four years, and that's where they're at now. I mean, you know what?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I understand. I understand, and I am.
It seems like, what I know with Hamlet, the more you use, the more you pay.
Correct.
And I'm like, what is the meaning, county is...
County is opposite.
Yeah.
They charge you more for the first few thousand. It's like a flat fee, and I think it's four, four or five dollars. And then as you use more, it decreases.
Right.
But the thing about it, what the state's looking at is a conservation aspect of it, too. So the scale that we went with was lower for the people, because what's, the majority of our customers fall below probably what, five thousand gallons?
Yes.
There, there, there's just not a lot of people that use a lot of, a lot of water. And I, I'll be honest with you. I, when I started seeing some of the usages that people were saying they were using, it shocked me. A hundred and fifty thousand gallons, eighty thousand gallons, sixty thou...
Well, a lot of that's water and lungs, too, right?
Correct.
But that's where a lot of the, the big, huge bills come from.
Well, I mean, I think even a thirty-five, forty-dollar jump, for me, is huge.
And then that's, and that's another thing, too, is, is like the county's doing it opposite. It's wrong to say that this person over here, who's actually conserving water, is being charged a lower amount and, or more. But then the person that's just throwing water in their yard is getting charged less, per gallons.
But you also want your, but you also want your yards to look presentable, so that, I mean...
You do. And, 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 and we didn't say we were not gonna keep those taps and allow people to do that. But we just can't keep charging a dollar and forty-something cent per thousand.
I mean, I understand what, like I said, I think it's just too much at one time. And, I mean, that's just not fair.
Well, I mean, and, and you, I mean, you, you're entitled to that by, by all stretches of imagination. But I would just say that the main reason that we chose to go with the rates that we did, the, the steadily going up for more usage, is because the last increase that we did in two thousand and eight, that was a ten dollar across the board on the minimum. And what that did is the people that did not use the twenty-five hundred gallons, what we saw there is, they were using, I talked to a lady that left from out here, she used nine hundred and fifty gallons. Her ten dollars went up, for the minimum, in two thousand and eight, to where she was actually, in theory, paying for water that she was not using. So what this council, or I, me specifically, what I liked about this rate is that the people that use the less, which is the majority of the people, then that would be fair and equitable to them, rather than going up ten dollars on the minimum, which would bump everybody's bill up. Yours would go up ten dollars. Um, the, the lady that lives by herself and uses nine hundred, hers would go up ten dollars, just straight across the board. And it does not even prepare us to get these low-interest loans or these grants and things. And I, I'll be first to admit it, probably the only one that can vouch for it's the mayor. Um, we, we've been battling this since at least two thousand and five.
Now, this is the hardest decision we had to make this year in our, in our planning. And, uh, we just, you know, we just can't get to a point where, where we can't pay to have this work done. And we know we got a hundred-year water plant down there, and a forty-four, be forty-four years on the sewer plant. And where's the money gonna come from if we don't have it standing by there for it? And the fact that the state has said they won't give us the grants if we're not at a certain percentage or rate. But just keep in mind that there's six people, every one of us up here is having to pay it, too.
And I've got a water meter and a spring irrigation system.
I do, too.
I have the, the double hit. But I, I, we have really looked at this for a long time.
We have. It's just, we put it off.
You're absolutely right. We should've done it years ago. Because up until, up until we had this increase, if we were not the cheapest for water in the state of North Carolina, we were very close, Robert, is that? Because we were at a dollar and forty-something cent per thousand.
And I get, I mean, that's what I'm saying. I understand. I understand that you have to go up again. My concern is it being a hit at one time.
Okay.
And I totally understand, but I would just say that everybody didn't get a thirty-dollar hit. It's, it's based off of usage.
Okay, let's, uh...
Well, I mean, I know there's a lot of people that did.
About what specifics?
I, I know there's a lot of people that did, but, I mean, I'm, I'm just telling you that, that most people didn't see that big of an increase, because it was on usage.
Okay, if y'all don't mind, let's let someone else, uh, here. Thank you so much for being here, and you're always welcome. Uh, who else wants to get up and speak? Anybody? Okay. And state your name, please, sir?
My name's James Bridgman.
Okay.
I live in East Rockingham. Uh, this month, my bill was fifty-one dollars. Usually it averages out about thirty-seven dollars. I used a twenty-five hundred gallon minimum, and my bill's still high. Well, what I'm not, what I'm here for is the other people that live around me, who are on disability, or have some other kind of disability, uh, mental, whatever it may be. A lot of them can't afford to make ends meet with these bills being like this. I mean, I've actually heard of people moving out of East Rockingham because the water bill's too damn high. Excuse me.
I just went up to them. They're moving. They're moving quick.
And, I mean, it, that's just ridiculous. I mean, for what we're paying, I mean, it's, it's outrageous.
Are you on sewer over there also, Mr. Bridgman?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, did that include your sewer bill, that fifty-three dollars? You're gonna understand that the Rockingham sewer bill went up this month, too, for you. I know.
They don't have sewer, do they?
Yeah, they have Rockingham sewer.
Right, and those rates...
Not with others.
No, not with us. We collect it and send the money back to Rockingham.
And those rates are based on Rockingham's rates for out-of-city limit sewage charges. So those did indeed go up per...
Do you know how much the actual water was that you paid?
Not the actual bill. I know it was less than twenty-five hundred gallons.
What do we control on his bill?
Just the water.
It would be the water.
Yeah, just water.
Yeah. But I do know that the store rates went up in Rockingham for people that live in East Rockingham.
Yeah, I mean, all of it.
Part of that rate increase is, is, uh, Rockingham.
Yeah.
All of that at one time is a big lick.
And you actually had it worse than the people that live in Hamlet? I, I don't have it off right on top of my head, but the, the out-of-city water rates is a little bit higher than the in-city water rates.
And why's that?
You want to explain that, Jonathan?
Why the out-of-city is more for East Rockingham?
Yeah. In other words, he wants to know why his rates are not the same as Hamlet.
I mean, every time you guys work on our border lines, you wind up having soup for the rest of the week.
Right, and anytime you have a problem with any pipe or any type of water, I mean, we welcome your calls here at Public Works here at City Hall.
Don't fix it, you won't have water.
The guys are, are also supposed to drain the lines at, at the fire hydrants, but it doesn't usually happen.
How do you know that?
Cause I wind up having soup the rest of the week. I have to drain my own lines, and plus, it costs me that much more than water.
Well, on top of that, Mr. Bridgman, every time we open the fire hydrants in, uh, East Rockingham, those old lines over there, we start knocking that stuff loose in those lines. I'm, I'm on the fire department in East Rockingham, and we just have a terrible time with when we have to open those hydrants over there. So I don't know if it's a...
They should go down to the lowest point and open them.
I know, but when you do, it starts, that pressure starts knocking that stuff loose all the way up the line. And it's, it's, it's a bad situation. We understand that.
Yeah, but a lot of people, like I said, that, that can't afford these bills. I mean, and there are a lot of people under the poverty level in East Rockingham. I being one of them. I live in the city of Rockingham, and I haven't been able to find a job, because I've been blackballed everywhere I go. And that's not your fault. But I'm just saying, a lot of people can't afford it.
And I appreciate you coming, Mr. Bridgman. I am so sorry, absolutely. I am, I understand completely. I've heard from a lot of people in East Rockingham, and, well, well, I wish I could, but these rates are set by the city of Rockingham for sewer.
We actually are doing something, 'cause if we don't fix these lines and fix our water plants, you think you got soup every once in a while, you gonna be in a Flint, Michigan, where you're buying water at the store, so you've got something to have to bathe in.
Well, I already buy water at the store.
Well, I, your bill shouldn't have gone up that much then. But I'm just telling you, we either fix it, we can't keep putting this off. We either have to fix our problem, which was in the newspaper, forty-two million dollars for a project to fix our lines, fix the plant. fix the plant. So there's, there's no, we can't continue to prolong. This board hasn't been together for the years down the, behind. We're trying to fix it now for the future. So it's not like, it's not like we, we sit here, this board wasn't here years ago.
Right.
This board is focused on what we have to do to look out for the future. And if we don't fix it, you're gonna have more of an issue than a high water bill. I, I'm paying it, my bill went up twenty-one dollars. There's four people.
But you're under poverty level?
There's assistance for, we can't help that, we can't help poverty level. We can't, we can't-
Anybody can help.
Yeah, they have assistance out there. They have assistance out there.
Every time you either go for assistance, they offering it to foreigners, not people that live here.
I-
Or we're not gonna get it.
Yeah, we're not going into that, that's-
Are the rates that he's referring to, aren't they set by the city of Rockingham?
The sewer rates just counts for that.
The sewer rate is, yes sir. And they went up first of July.
Right.
Yeah, theirs went up.
If he used less than twenty-five hundred gallons, what would his water bill went up?
Outside.
Outside the city limits?
Our, our part on the outside, a dollar amount.
If he used less than two thousand gallons, it would be approximately-
Well, he said he used twenty-five hundred.
Right, uh, I'm looking probably forty dollars for water. Approximately, just roughly.
And what would it have been before?
Before, under the old rates?
Under the old rate.
It would've been twenty-one plus something. I know it's higher than that outside.
Outside one.
My bill was thirty-seven dollars before it went up, it was fifty-one dollars for the two years. And I do, on the basis of my concern.
It would've been thirty-three eighty for twenty-five hundred gallons of water, it looks like, under the old rate. For water, not sewer.
Thirty-three eighty and the new rate, it's at what?
And then again, we don't know how much the sewer rate went up.
Right, I'm, I'm looking probably thirty-seven dollars, that's just roughly my head.
I heard it took a pretty good jump.
So on our end, it would've went up four dollars.
Approximately, just-
Four to five dollars, and then the rest would be the increase for Rockingham.
The Rockingham sewer rates. Because the Rockingham sewer rates went up from six oh two to nine seventy-five. And then, uh, that's for the first two thousand gallons and then after that for forty. From, um, that's up from two seventy, so you're looking at-
At least another fifteen dollars roughly.
Right, probably a, ten, approximately ten dollars in sewer charge.
Okay. Mr. Bridgman, thank you for being here tonight. Uh, next, anybody else want to get up at this time? Okay, if not, we'll close comments. And move along to item number six. Uh, we have with us tonight, Mr. Tommy Overby with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. And I understand that he has an award for us tonight. And this maybe helped ease things a little bit.
I appreciate your time having me here. Um, first off, for NCDQ, this is the good times whenever we get to acknowledge the operations staff for our plants. But the North Carolina Division of Water Resources has honored sixty-nine water treatment plants for surpassing federal and state drinking water standards. The Division's Public Water Supply Section has awarded the facilities a prestigious North Carolina area-wide optimization award, which is a part of the state effort to enhance the performance of existing plants, uh, and the surface water plants. While all drinking water systems must meet strict water, state and federal drinking water standards, these systems meet performance goals that are significantly more stringent. And during two thousand seventeen, more than three point eight million North Carolina residents were served by these award-winning plants. The goals, our normal goals are point three NTU ninety-five percent of the time. And to give you a judgment, a ninety-five percent of the time, for a plant that runs twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year, that is eighteen hits a year. Eight, they normally take six readings a day. And all those, it's eighteen readings over point one. Or point three if they're not meeting the point one, so it's only eighteen hits. So I commend Robert and his staff. Robert says his staff gets concerned whenever they see point oh four. So he's had a very good job, he's got a good, good, good staff and we're glad to be here. So, Rob? And this was, this is seven years optimized too, for his seventh year.
Okay.
Solid.
Thank you.
And, and I would like to say again, like I said last year, this is, yeah, I put, I put rules and guidelines in, but this is thanks to Danny and, and my other operators. Um, they carry out the day-to-day operations of that plant. I put the guidelines in and they follow them. And Tommy's absolutely right. When Danny, when the numbers start going up, Danny's like, we gotta do something. So thanks to Danny and my other operators, um, for this award and the previous year's awards, because I'm one. I'm there eight hours Monday through Friday. The plant runs twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And it's because of them that the city's getting this award, so I'd like to thank them. And thank y'all for, for allowing that.
Uh, Robert, um, I appreciate what you and Danny and the guys down there do. I hate that the citizens concerned with an increase in having to pay for the services that you guys work hard to keep clean water coming to every citizen in this town left before they saw this award. But it's, those awards, we're serving the best water and we can't continue to do that without increasing rates and getting our facilities up to where they need to be.
That's correct. And I'd like to add, our plant was built in nineteen hundred. So it's a hundred and almost a hundred and twenty years old. Um, our lines are that old. We know that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And without the increases, and I, listen, I had to pay it too. I wasn't happy, but I see the need. I've been here thirty-three years, the system's gotten thirty-three years older since I started. And if we do not stay on top of it, we're gonna have more breaks and more water issues out there in the system. So without the money, we can't fix the problem. And again, we're working with a plant that's almost a hundred and twenty years old. We're making it work and it's because, again, of the hard work of the people I've got working under me.
And that's just what you can see, you can't see what's underground out here all over time.
No, there's spaghetti underground.
We've got, I'm sure we've got leaks we won't find.
Yeah, exactly.
We know we do.
How long does duct tape hold up?
It's doing pretty, it's doing pretty good. Yeah, it's doing pretty good so far.
Thank you for what you do, thank you for what city crews do.
That's good to hear.
Thank you, thanks for being here. All right, council, moving along to item number seven is, uh, ordinance for demolish thirteen oh five McDonald Avenue, which is the, uh, uh, Hudson property that's across from the, uh, Hamlet Middle School. And, um, Wendy, did you have some comments on that?
Yeah, I think we need to hold off on that and do a little more research. There's, uh, some heirs and other people involved that I think we need to get this cleared up.
Uh, Gail, did you have some, uh, information, uh, research you had done on this property?
Ms. Lyerly had a local attorney to do a title search on it. Uh, it did show that both Mr. and Ms. Hudson are deceased, their sons are deceased. And there was a document, uh, in the, that was shown in the title search that shows that two years prior to her death, that she was leaving all her belongings to, um, a local businessman that had helped to take care of her over the years. Now, my understanding from Ms. Hudson's brother was that the businessman did not want the property or anything that he, she had. He only wanted to take care of her, um, over the years as he did.
He informed me of the same situation.
So, um, like I say, the title search, that's all that came back. Uh, there had been, I was told at one point that there were some liens on it for some medical bills, but that did not prove. So the, uh, city was ready, like I say, requesting that staff, uh, that council issued the ordinance to demolish, we would notify, we do know there is a brother and there is a sister, so we were going to notify them, also the business men that, uh, had helped take care of her and who she had in her paperwork left her belongings to.
Now, the gentleman in question, uh, from what I was able to find out, uh, for the last four or five years, she was in a nursing home and he had absolutely nothing to do as far as, uh, her dealings. He just helped her before she got to the point where she was in the nursing home. But, uh, nobody we can find has any interest whatsoever in the property. And it's sitting there burned and it's right across from the school.
Isn't there a legal chain of control of this property by the state of North Carolina?
Yeah, but there again, we've got the same top of these other properties.
If we, if we do proper notification because of it being the hazard that it is, if we do our due diligence to notify those involved, which would be the brothers, the brother, the sister of, I asked the brother for an address for the grandchildren, he said, send the letter to me. So I jokingly told him I would and I expected to get a return receipt, a smiley face that he signed for it. But I think if we do our due diligence, um, to notify those because it is a hazard, it's across from the school, it's burned, it has asbestos, uh, then the city has done their part. And I was also going to send a letter to the local businessman just in case so that we can make sure all those of interest are notified.
And it's har- it's harming the properties around it too now.
Yeah, yeah. And we don't have time for a buyer to think about buying it. I mean, it's something we need to move on and, cause it's, it is, it's right across from the school and it's a hazard. It's something I know you guys have been working on pretty hard to get taken care of and it's been there for two, a little over two years.
I think that's correct.
Yeah, and the fence has been torn up since and the overgrowth is horrendous. And we just, uh, I make a motion to demolish, including, um, I mean, uh, cause the fence is torn up too. We are planning on taking that down. Is that part of, could that be considered part of, or?
The way we have the, uh, we're planning to do it is two separate beds. We were going to do one bed for the house and clearing of the lot that it sits on, but to leave the fence because it is across from the school. Going and looking at it, it is pushed down in one area, but it looks like perhaps it could be put back up.
Now, there's a gate there that can be put back up.
And that fence, like, two or three foot, it's not big, is it?
Yeah, it's not a big fence.
It's just your average chain link fence. And then there are two adjoining, yeah, there are two adjoining lots that we were going to do a separate bid of having the undergrowth cleared of it, but leaving the mature trees. So we were gonna do it two different ways.
I was thinking that fence around, that the front part of it was like two or three foot, like it was.
It may be, Jesse, when I went, I'd like say it was pushed down.
There's four feet around it.
Yeah, it's a real-
Four foot fence.
So we're gonna contact everybody again, is that right? We, I mean, you've got somebody that already notified.
We're, we're required to, uh, do our due diligence to contact anybody involved.
But there's a possible will, is that cor- I mean, that, that she bequeathed it to this person?
There is a notarized paper that was provided to us by the attorney that did the title search. It is a handwritten paper that says, I states her name, bequeathed all my personal belongings to this gentleman. She signed it, there's two witnesses and it was notarized.
I will say, I have looked into this property a few years ago. Hadn't been that long, it's a couple of years ago. At one time, on the tax cards, it was not listed in their names. It was listed as US housing or US-
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
We tried to find that out.
It was listed that way at one time.
Currently, the last that we checked, it was in their names.
And that was at the time that she was in a nursing home.
It may be since it has burned, that may, I don't know.
But-
Mr. Morpheus, what does the state do? I mean, I'm just curious, what, the, does it just sit there forever? Or does the state have a, a method to, to, to turn this over to somebody via the, the courts?
So, good question. And I can tell you from working with Gail on other properties, her practice is to, when, before she gets ready to bring a demolition ordinance to you all, she doesn't just look at the tax card, which is what some code officers does. She actually hires a local law firm to get a title search done. What a title search does is they're gonna look at this state file, they're gonna look at the registry of deeds. So she's already gotten a pretty comprehensive look. We have the authority to, once the ordinance is adopted, to do the demolition work. And, and as Gail said, really, the issue is making sure that everybody who's entitled to notice gets notice. Now, if there are already liens on the property from other, you know, uh, medical liens or if there are tax liens or things like that, we can still proceed. There's kind of an interesting question of whether someone who eventually buys the property takes it, um, free and clear of those liens and all, but that's really not a question we have right now. So, uh, you know, I looked at the ordinance that was in the agenda packet before the meeting, but haven't been involved with any of the background on this. So I can't really say if there's more that less should've been done, but my, my experience is that, that our court is usually very thorough.
No, I'm not, I'm not questioning, I, I, I'm questioning the, the legal process. Have we, do we normally find, was there any fines on this property?
I did not put fines on this property because there was no one to fine. I mean, with the property owners being deceased, there was no one to, to really put the fines on it, it would've been useless.
Well, well, if this is a valuable piece, relatively could be a valuable piece of property.
Huge corner lot, got two or three lots in there.
Uh, can't we, can't we try to foreclose on this property?
We cannot, well, for lien, for code enforcement issues, if we had put fines on the property because of the state that it was in, we cannot put a lien against the property for that. When we do the demolition, all the costs that we incur for the demolition, the advertising, the legal fees, the time spent, the actual demolition, then TC takes that information we provide to him and he puts a lien on the property for only the monies that we have actually spent.
And most of the time, the money that you spent is more than the property's worth.
Except, except for possibly this piece of property.
And to your question, Mr. Um, uh, Mr. Lindsey, the lien, if y'all instructed us, we could go into court and foreclose on that.
Okay, well, so there's, but there's a possibility in this situation that maybe the, the, this businessman might be interested in, in changing his mind.
How do we know that?
Yeah.
Well, it would seem to me if anybody was interested in the property at all, they would've already come forward and said, I want the property, what I need to do. Obviously, nobody wants it and it's in the, in the heirs or whatever. I say proceed with what we do and forget it.
All right, got a motion on the floor from, uh, Mr. Bowie to, uh-
Would it be ongoing caring for it?
My motion is to, my motion's to demolish.
I'm sorry, was I ask a, Ms. Maskey, did you ask me a question?
I mean, at the point that we demolish it and clear those other two lots, what happens next year?
We do not usually go back on the properties and clear them off once.
Well, and, and just to, to your point, ma'am, um, going on and demolishing the property or clearing it doesn't create an ongoing obligation- Well, and, and just to, to your point, ma'am, um going on and demolishing the property or clearing it doesn't create an ongoing obligation for us. So, it may be that the city decides to do more maintenance in the future if it hasn't changed hands, but the work now that's being proposed doesn't create a future obligation.
Okay.
I understand that. If no one's, if you're not gonna try to resolve the issue with the property, then it's, it is going to just sit there.
Well, I mean, at that point, if you've got somebody that you know that may want the property, they could step in and take the property and just pay the city back for what, what the lien would be for. So, I mean, the house is burned, I mean, we're, all we're doing is stopping a hazard right there in front of the school. And there's whatever option that would be there if somebody wanted to purchase the property, or whoever owns the property that would get it through.
Who do they purchase it from?
It don't matter. Well, it would go through the same system that she's talked about.
I think they're gonna have to contact an attorney that handles the state.
That's right. But ultimately, they're gonna have to pay us for what we put in it.
But we would have a lien against the property if it was to be sold after we demolish it.
Well, if we're gonna put a lien on it, then I, that's not.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor to demolish this property. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Do I have any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise.
Oppose.
I'm just not getting involved with your council members wanting to have buyers to buy property. I'm just not doing it.
To oppose, okay. Did you get that, Mr. Strickland?
Not getting involved in that.
Now, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask a question. Do we know when the last time taxes were paid on that property?
It's, it's in the lien packet in the, um, the title search, but um I don't think it's far behind.
I'm just curious. Oh, really? So, somebody was paying it.
Well, it, it hadn't burned, but what, two years ago, so.
Yeah. The neighbors that live out there and put a lot of money into their property, they'd be glad that we did clean it up, so.
For the record, though, this was handled no differently than any other property you've dealt with, correct?
Oh, no.
So, everything was done the exact same way.
Okay, at this time, we have before us, counsel, uh, information to Mr. Blanton regarding uh scope of services for the wastewater treatment plant operations evaluation. Uh, uh, Mr. Blanton, what is your issue here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the past few months, I've been discussing the issue of upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant with uh John Gray with the Wooton Company. And we have put together a scope of services that's looking forward to the future with what's going to need to be done at the wastewater treatment plant. It's split up into four phases. The first phase, in short, assesses the plant to see what we have, and it looks at things, it looks at things that could be done in order to improve what we're doing, such as an idle primary clarifier that's out there. It's my understanding that in nineteen ninety-two, or not, in the early nineties, some upgrades were done to the sewer plant under the understanding that the, or under the assumption that the Imperial Food Plant would reopen. So, a certain portion of the plant was designated for Imperial Foods only. When it did not reopen, they shut down that portion of the plant. So, there is an idle primary clarifier there. Uh, so the first phase would look at that, among other things. The second phase would be equipment recommendations for what we could do with the information that we have now from the uh amount of sludge that we can put into the Marks Creek. The third phase would be formal findings from the uh, from phase one and two. And then the fourth phase would look at a belt press to see what type of capabilities we could move forward with. Instead of land application, having a belt press that we had onsite at the plant. This uh proposal was submitted on July seventeenth from the Wooton Company for all four phases. It is seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for the study. Uh, we did some similar studies some ten, fifteen years ago, but things have changed. In the meantime, there are new regulations on what we can put in the creek and what we cannot. There's new information that the Wooton Company seems to feel they have found that may be able to be helpful instead of a full-fledged upgrade, that we can do some minor renovations, short-term, at the wastewater treatment plant to be able to uh treat more wastewater as it comes in. So, this is for council's consideration tonight. I'll be glad to answer any questions, and I can at the best of my ability.
Seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to tell us all this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
And I have a question. We, we, under state guideline, we're able to go, if, if we have the capacity, we're able to go to two million gallons by there, if it meets the.
Certain pH chemical balance, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So, it, it's worth, I mean.
I think so. I would recommend that we move forward with the study, but it's, of course, the council's discretion.
I understand if we, from what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm incorrect, but that if we put the belt press in, it's gonna save us a lot of money in transporting.
Correct, with land application.
And it's also gonna get over the spraying problem that everybody's having, including us.
Correct. We won't have to go the some eleven mile round trip to uh do land application and spray the waste each day.
Solics will have to be hauled to Anson County.
Anson County.
And that'll require a trip every day, or?
Once a week, perhaps? No, perhaps once a week. Correct, with a belt press.
And we, we have been fortunate that they've upped the amount of waste that, that we can dump into Marks Creek. That was the issue that we fought, and actually considered not upgrading for a while, because you could upgrade the plant, but you couldn't dump the water.
It'd be stupid.
Yeah, it'd be dumb to do that, so. And just for the record, this is part of a, a, a long-term plan, I mean, that we've been looking at. Only thing we didn't implement before is a, a rate hike, and that was done this year.
And we do have the opportunity to be able to purchase a used uh belt press from the city of St. Paul's, is that correct?
They do have one that's available. Uh, the, both the Wooton Company and I would feel more comfortable with that press if an independent evaluation was done. We have some, we have several people in mind to go. It's actually being housed in South Carolina. It's an older belt press that St. Paul's bought under the underst- or under the assumption that they were going to be upgrading in the future, but they have decided that it's probably gonna be more cost feasible to send all of their waste to Lumberton as opposed to treating it in-house.
I don't see where we've got much choice but, but to go with the Wooton Company to provide this information as uh recommended by the city manager.
Okay, I got a motion from uh.
I make that a motion.
Okay, got a motion. Have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise.
You just have one comment?
Yes.
I just wish that the people that were here earlier would have stayed to hear this.
Yeah.
And maybe that would help ease the pain of the bill. Doubt it. Well, we still cheaper than anybody else.
Um, item number nine, counsel, is interlocal agreement with uh recognition of the city firing EMS as a wilderness search and rescue resource. And uh I have read over it and it uh, the only thing that I saw in there was an item regarding uh having to purchase certain equipment to belong to it, but I have found out today that our fire department has already got this.
Right, I spoke at length.
Fire rescue, so I feel comfortable with it.
Right. I spoke at length today with Chief White and Assistant Chief Lassiter. This is going to be no cost to the city. Actually, they described it to me as a very prestige um opportunity that the rescue squad has. They have all the equipment that they currently need. There'll be no, uh, no new equipment uh bought under this agreement. Uh, it's just a formality with the county to be on standby should we need to, um, should we need to assist in a search and rescue.
And we have recently. And you're comfortable with what you've got now, what you sent out last?
Yes, sir, and I apologize for that going out after the packet went out, but um it's, it's the same substance of what Chief White proposed. I just cleaned it up some and made some minor revisions.
Counsel, what are your wishes? Approve this agreement? All right, I got a motion to approve the agreement. Need a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Uh-huh.
Approve, uh, oppose likewise. All right, thank you. Next item of business to come up is item number ten, is a discussion for Planning Board to review zoning map amendments. Uh, Ms. Strickland.
At the last council meeting, when Richmond Community College was here uh discussing the solar panel array, it was questioned why their zoning is the way that it is. Um, so after speaking with some of the staff at RCC, uh, they've got some upcoming projects there that want to do some expansion. And since council had questioned the zoning, uh, staff is asking council to give the authority for the planning board to look at the college, uh, the way it's zoned, and see if we could find a better zoning district that will suit the needs they're going to need. It just needs to be initiated by council. If you give the authority for the planning board, they will then meet, they will come up with a um, what they think is a better zoning district, and then they will bring that recommendation back to council for final approval.
You just need a consensus on that?
But uh, wait a minute now, hold, hold on just a minute now. I don't see it here, but you've also got the Oakhurst Spear and Bridges.
That's not two. Yeah, listen, yeah, we've got two different things that the planning board has.
Okay, all right. Okay, so I need just a consensus on the, or I need a vote on that.
Can we also possibly put the hospital property, it, it's zone residential, I believe? For y'all to look at, I mean, I mean, we don't know what they're gonna do with it, but, but it's zone residential.
If they haven't asked for, and a hospital is a permitted use, a college is a permitted use in the, in a residential area.
So, the hospital got built on it, okay.
But, but they are permitted uses, but, but I think on that, I mean, from my perspective, I would wait until there is a use something than what they want to do with the building. Rather than jump the gun, do it now, and then we rezone it incorrectly. Maybe it needs to be office institutional instead of business.
Well, that makes sense, too. We, we've just got so many, there are properties around town that
We do, that are not.
were business, when they made this, and they, they didn't, they didn't ever look at anything, and, and that's fine, move on, sorry.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Okay, do we need uh, we need a vote on this?
I made a motion, yeah, we'll approve it, move forward.
And who's doing the second?
Okay, I got a motion to approve, got a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise. Now, the Oakhurst.
Okay. Uh, the city has been contacted by a cellular company that is interested in placing a communication tower on a property that the city owns down on Oakhurst. It's just a wooded lot. Um, it is not zoned to allow the communication tower. So, again, uh, staff is asking council to allow the planning board to research this and see if they think that changing the zoning to one of the zoning districts that would allow the cell tower would be beneficial to the community.
This is adjacent to Public Works, right?
Yeah, across the street.
Across the street.
Across the street from Public Works. Counsel, what are your wishes on this?
I'm moved to approve that.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise. Very good. Thank you. At this time, item number eleven, reappointment to the Hamlet Housing Authority Board. We have a couple of applications. We need just one or two tonight.
Just one for the Hamlet Housing Authority.
Okay. And the recommendation from the, from Housing Authority, did they have one?
Yes, it should be in the.
Right, Mrs. Wanda Alman for a five-year term.
Oh, okay. So, that would be a reappointment then of Wanda Alman?
Correct.
Okay, counsel, what are your wishes on that?
I was thinking that was a mayor appointment. It's not a mayor.
No, that's a board like ABC Board. Isn't it?
Hamlet Housing Authority.
Yeah.
I thought that was, too.
Has the Housing Authority made a recommendation?
Yeah, uh, reappoint Wanda Alman.
To who?
Wanda Alman. She serves on it now, it's a reappointment for her.
I make a motion that we reappoint the recommendation, Alman, Alman.
Wanda Alman, okay.
Um, by the planning, on, for the planning board.
All right, I got a motion. I got a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise.
Just for the future, could y'all check on that?
Sure.
Cause I'm, I was pretty sure that was a.
I thought we had done it.
A normal appointment.
Okay, we'll check.
Next month, we will have two, is that correct?
No, so when we get to the plan, when we get to the planning board, that's where we're gonna have several appointments there.
Okay.
Item number twelve.
All right, item number twelve. All right, there we go. We're good. Uh, and item number twelve, point, planning board, and we need to make two appointments on that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. We have app- application.
There, well, let me, if I could explain, please.
Yes.
Um, there are two applications in your packet. Um, David Quick has served as an alternate on the board for several years, and he has agreed to come as a regular member. We are losing, uh, within the next two months, five members on our planning board. So, um, staff's recommendation is we're asking council to appoint David Quick to a regular position so that we will have his expertise. And then to appoint, there are two other applications in your packet, if you appoint one of those tonight to fill two positions, there will be more positions next month to be filled.
Can we do them one at a time, or do they need to be both together?
No, we wouldn't.
Cause it could be switched all the way across.
Okay, now, if you want to do them separately, that would be fine.
Cause I'll make a motion for David Quick, cause he has served as an alternate.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion on Mr. Quick? If not, all in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise. All right, now you pick one of the other two, Mrs. Deborah Sigal or Mr. Dewey Brower.
Do you need a, a, al- somebody to fill David's slot?
That's what we.
Yeah. We were going to, and Jonathan's gonna mention that at comments, trying to get some people to come in to fill some applications.
Can one of these go into that slot, or?
We're gonna need them as regular members. We're gonna have more, yeah, we're gonna have more to fill next month.
Okay, you have no, you have, okay. You have nobody else?
Right.
Okay. Uh, I recommend Dewey Brower, he's been on the council.
I'll second it.
Okay, I got a motion and a second for Dewey Brower. Do I have any further comment on that? Okay, if not, all in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise. All right, that's all you needed on that tonight, right?
Correct.
Next month, we need some more applications, right?
Yes, sir.
Concerned citizens would be nice. Item number thirteen is approval of tax settlements for fiscal year twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. Any comments on that, counsel? If not, do I have a motion to accept them?
Motion accept.
Have a motion to accept?
Second.
Have a second? Any further comment? If not, all in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise.
I just wanna add to that. There was a, if I'm reading this correctly, a ninety-four point two-five percent collections rate on taxes.
I believe that's right, Mr. Blue. Ninety-four, correct, ninety-four point two-five percent.
Down, isn't it? Still good.
Right, maybe um, point and a half.
Thought it was like ninety-seven.
It was ninety-five point ninety-seven in twenty seventeen, and we're at ninety-four twenty-five as of now. That rate will probably go up once these are released, or once taxes start coming in.
Was that ninety-five what?
It was ninety-five uh point ninety-seven. You may have it in your packet, Mr. Blue, under collection rate where you're seeing that ninety-four point twenty-five. Above that is all the way back to um oh seven, it looks like.
Okay, I got you, I got you. Thank you. Yeah, if I just look up one.
Uh, item number fourteen is approval of tax releases. If you had it before you, it's a total of two hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. And all of it had to do with uh vehicles. They were either sole vehicles or heirs and they weren't in the city limits of handling. Counsel, what are your wishes on that?
Need to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise. Thank you. This time, I have a mayoral proclamation that we do annually for the uh Chiari Malformation Awareness Month, September twenty eighteen. Whereas Chiari malformation is a serious and chronic neurological disorder where the cerebellum descends out of the skull, thereby compressing the brain stem and/or spinal cord, and whereas symptoms usually appear during adolescence or early adulthood, and can include severe head and neck pain, vertigo, muscle weakness, balance problems, blurred or double vision, difficulty swallowing, and sleep apnea. And whereas there is no known preventive measures or cures, due to the lack of awareness and research of the disorder, persons and family can be under tremendous physical, mental, emotional, and economic strain. And whereas raising awareness of this traumatic disorder is essential to generating federal and private funding for research and a cure. Now, therefore, I, William Bayless, Mayor of the Hamlet, proclaim September the twenty, twenty eighteen as Chiari Malformation Awareness Month in the city of Hamlet, and I urge all citizens to take part in activities and observances designed to increase awareness and understanding of Chiari malformation. Witness my hand and seal, City of Hamlet, this fourteenth day of August twenty eighteen. Next item of business, item number sixteen, is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we previously mentioned, the planning and zoning board is in need of some members. They are, these are three-year terms, and they meet as needed on the third Monday of each month. Five-year terms, I apologize. They are five years' terms, and they meet on the third Monday of each month. Um, if you are interested in serving, please. Um, if you are interested in serving, please contact, uh, Gail Strickland here at City Hall or stop by City Hall.
Can't, we work on staggering these a little somehow, get.
In different terms.
Well, I mean, we've got five, most of them are, we're gonna put all these people on at the same time. And if they go one round, usually on board, you'll, you'll, you'll have two people coming off every year or
Mm-hmm.
Something like that. And, and try, while we're, while we're replacing these people, maybe we could do a, a, a couple, two, three-year terms.
We lose a lot of experience all at one time.
Yeah, and I mean.
Our chairperson.
And, and some of those people have been on there for ten and fifteen years.
Sure.
Ms. Shirley McDuffie has served thirty years on the board.
Wow.
Wow.
Uh, what I, what happened was at one point, they were serving three-year terms and then it changed to five and it put everybody coming off at the same time. Staggering would be wonderful. Uh, TC, is that an issue that we can designate?
With the planning board, you all can designate the terms however you want. Um, if you want, if everybody's coming off at the same time right now, we could just rewrite the ordinance to say, you know, starting next year, whenever somebody's in a one-year term, two-year term, three-year term.
Keep them longer, keep them longer than one or two. Don't let them get away.
Well, I was just gonna say, but then after that, everybody could stand.
We just wanna be sure we keep experience on there.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and the goal being that then you have everybody serving five-year term standing.
He, I'm sure he can work something out that, that probably is in the best interest of the city.
Be glad to. And we can bring that back for council's consideration.
I did have one other question on that. I think maybe Ms. Strickland and I talked about, is one of these members not the, uh, ETJ member? That'll be coming up.
That will be next month.
Okay. So it'll have to be somebody from the ETJ.
And I do have someone that has applied.
Okay.
That's in the ETJ. So that spot should be taken.
Thank you.
And again, anybody that's interested, by all means, let us know and we'll make sure that we get it to council for consideration. Football and cheerleading signups are continuing on this month. The thirty-first will be the last day for regular signups with the seventh of Sept- uh, September being the deadline for late signups. On that same note, our seven and eight-year-old All-Stars placed third in the state. So we are certainly proud and excited for them and, for the city and our entire Parks and Rec Department. Uh, the city will be closed on Labor Day. That will not affect residential or commercial garbage pickup for that particular, uh, particular date. And that is all that I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, any questions for the manager?
Just, uh, thank you for going the extra mile, explaining the water bills to, I know you, any day you would call, and even tonight. I mean, you did an excellent job talking to them, telling them what the, the rates were about and all. I know you caught a lot of heat for that.
Started the job.
Say thank, yeah.
At this time, at this time, we'll move along to the comments, counsel. I'll start with Mr. McQueen tonight.
Um, other than what we've already stated, you know, um, hate we had to go up on the, on the water bill like we did, but, um, I guess the easiest way to put it is now that the people that use the, the most water are gonna pay more for the water. It gets us in line to be able to do things such as upgrading the wastewater treatment plant like we voted to move on, move forward with tonight. Um, and there's, everybody didn't see a fifty or seventy percent increase. The majority of the customers saw the increase comparable to what we went up in two thousand and eight. It's just based on usage now. Um, the one gentleman that was here, his total bill went up twenty, thirty bucks, but our part only went up four or five dollars. I talked to many people leaving City Hall. I actually came up here one day and talked to people as they left. And there were some people that saw a ten, fifteen, twenty. Uh, but there was some people that didn't see an increase at all. And there were some people that, uh, even saw a fifty cent decrease. It's not a lot, but it's not putting that minimum burden of that minimum payment on those folks that use the less amount of water. So, um, other than that, that's really all I have to say tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lindsay?
Uh, fun day at the library. Uh, thank the police, the fire, uh, all the volunteers and the Baylesses were out there helping us and, and the kids seemed to have a good time. Uh, appreciate everybody that did that and manager closing the street and everybody. It was, it was a good time. The kids thoroughly enjoyed it. Uh, and he said all he can say about the water, sorry.
Is that it, Ms. Lindsay?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Maskey.
Sorry about the law. In February, back before February, we had discussed some Ms. Lindsay's properties with the city.
Mm-hmm.
Time to get our guys.
Sure, sure. I, I actually have them here. The night, Public Works Director and I reviewed all of them and all of those properties are used for something, whether it's a right-of-way, it's an underground forced main. There were only two, I believe, that were not being utilized for any particular purpose. One was some property up here off of one seventy-seven where you turn right to go back to the cemetery was one lot that was in question. But for the most part, everything Public Works Director and I looked at, there was some purpose that that property was being used for. Whether it was a budding city property or we had utilities going underground on those properties. But there were, uh, the one on one seventy-seven comes to mind right off, but for the most part, all of those were being used for something that were owned by the city, such as theater or city-owned property or facilities. Right, yes, ma'am.
Are we supposed to keep those, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's all.
Are we supposed to keep those right-of-ways clean, clear? Do we have, do we have some obligation? But not water? Okay.
Now, another concern I have is that Bison Juckerson, I know I've called you about it before. It takes very little rain and that is sidewalk, street, and everything is underwater.
Storm drain.
It, it creates several inches of water rather quickly and, um.
Right there at the Presbyterian Church. Have we got a problem down there on the drains?
It gets hazardous quickly. I just, it's just my concern that rain and cars could have accidents there. If we were to get a little rain and some cold weather and you have some ice, it could cause an accident. But the water, the sidewalks totally underwater several.
Our biggest, our biggest issue in the back intersection there is undersides drainage. Uh, but we do get a lot of the pine straw, um, clippings from the leaning of the church. We had a client who stopped one day where they were, they were cutting grass and they were rolling it out of the street.
Right.
Uh, I stopped and thought they had to get it up. But you, you had five or six houses to put stuff out in the street and get a hard rain, you'd roll it down.
It goes.
And we've tried to stay on top of it.
It takes, it takes a twelve-inch pipe, it takes it down to maybe a sixty-five, and you can't handle all that water. It's in the hard rains.
It's a very hazardous area.
I don't wanna take any of Ms. Maskey's thunder, but I understand we already got another complaint on this drain in front of the cleaners down here. I thought we had made efforts to repair that situation.
And we went out there on Friday, Friday. Um, actually, a couple of complaints last week. Public Works Director and I went up there Friday and a crew went up there Friday to clean up where, uh, the problem is at that storm drain right there. There is a ditch there, right Billy?
We've got a real hazard right there. That's just the, the last time it was a cave-in and washing out under it. Okay.
Right.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Martin?
Uh, just to hit a little bit on what, uh, Mr. McQueen had to say about our water. There's nobody on this board that wants to raise rates. Nobody on this board wants to raise taxes. But when you operate a facility and it costs you two million, seven hundred dollars to operate it, and you take in two million, three hundred, that means you gotta take four hundred thousand dollars to cover the balance, to make it balance. You cannot operate and you will not be in business very long if you have to continue to do that, and that's where we're at. And that's why we had to make the decisions that we did. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Bowie?
Uh, the only thing I have is what Eddie was saying is, is, uh, the four hundred thousand dollar deficit, uh, deficit each year. Uh, it's, it's kinda like your home. How many years in a row are you gonna spend ten thousand dollars to fix your home for the same issues over and over and over? Or your car? You know, how long are you gonna go? And a lot of citizens are correct. We could say, okay, we're gonna increase it in increments over the period of four years or five years. But when you have a plant and plants that are old as these, how long can we continue to prolong this before maybe another board comes on and says, uh, we're not gonna worry about that? And so, cause we don't wanna raise rates. So no matter when we raise it, even if we did it in pieces and increments, you're still gonna have complaints. No one wants their bill to go up. You know, when your bill goes up with your phone bill, do you call and complain? When gas rates go up, do you call and complain? When car insurance goes up, do you call and complain? Everything is, everything increases every year. I don't wanna spend four dollars a gallon, uh, or four, uh, four dollars for a gallon of milk. But prices go up. And unfortunately, we had to make this tough decision. And I think every board member up here can tell you their water bill went up too. I have four people in my house, three women taking showers. I pressure washed my house. My bill wa- went up twenty-one dollars. I use a little over five thousand gallons roughly every month. So it's about being conservative. Um, if you're young, you understand the reference, making it rain. If you wanna make it rain with your money flowing out there in your yard, then you're gonna have to pay the price for that. So it, it's just, we have to be more conservative. We have to think about our usage. And this board has to think about the future of the city and its water systems, whether it be sewer or whether it be clean water we're using. Um, there was some comments, I think there's some confusion as to, uh, taps, your second tap for watering your lawn. There's not two lines that come to your home. It's one line, it's all clean water. We don't have two lines that services your lawn and one that services your home. It's one line. The second tap just says you're not paying sewage on it. So I just wanna make sure that's cleared up for those that had some issues and concerns. There were comments made about their bills being a certain amount, but they're coming in and finding out, I don't know what they're reading on the bill, but they use the amount of gallons they used. We had some come in, they found leaks, and we worked with those customers. We fixed their rates based on previous history of their usage. So this was an opportunity, I think, also helped some citizens out that had leaks that they were unaware of. And they were able to get them fixed and their, uh, their, um, bill was decreased based on their previous history of usage. So, and it's, it's not fun for us. And it's not a good decision to have to make. And, um, but I'm just glad we haven't had to raise taxes, cause that would be ugly. So, other than that, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. The, I feel pain as far as, uh, as the water bills go up. I've been on council now for a long time, and I don't know of a time that we've had a, uh, council retreat on any of the councils that we did not discuss water rates. Water rates and sewer rates, they just, they, they kill us. That's our biggest problem, is trying to keep that infrastructure going. We, but on occasion, had to raise rates on the garbage simply because of the fact that the rates have gone up for diesel fuel. We found out one year we were going in the hole because we were paying more for diesel fuel than the money we were taking in for the garbage service. And, um, you know, you elected us all up here and we've got to look at these tough issues, and of course, we have to take the heat for it. But, uh, you know, I'm on a fixed income and I have to, one other thing I got to look at, I got to look at the same as you do. We got a four-cent increase coming on our county taxes, and, uh, that's gonna take a hit. But, um, the cost of everything goes up and the cost of services and what hurts us, of course, we have to buy water pipe, the price is up. We have to buy chemicals. Uh, we have to buy those chemicals for the sewer plant. And having gone to the sewer plant and visited, I know that we're in a dire shape down there on a lot of equipment. It is just, it's just a matter of time until it's gotta be replaced. And just about every year, we end up having to replace one of the big pumps or something down there. But we are doing the best that we can. All of us are working hard at it. We want the city of Hamlet to be the best and we're doing the best that we can for the city. And I think we're doing great. I think we've got a fantastic city. I like the people working hard, the HBDA, Hamlet business people are working hard. Uh, we've got a lot of good things going. We got, uh, two railroad museums and that we can be proud of. And, uh, we've just got a good town going and we like the fact that, uh, for the most part, people are behind us. But again, I'm just like everybody else. I'm having to pay that water bill also, so, uh, thank you so much. And thanks to the library for the, what they put on last week. They do it every year after the reading season for the summer. And, uh, the Lenzies were down there helping us. A number of people just went up there and volunteered. They wouldn't have been able to get it done without the volunteers. So, uh, that's all I've got at this time. I've got, we asked for a motion to go into closed session for General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A, three and six, for attorney pri- uh, for attorney-client privilege in a personnel matter.
Motion to go in closed session.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Okay, we'll go into, go into closed session. Jasmine?